Sorry for the delay, it's 6:02 and we'll call the meeting to order if you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll please remain standing for the invocation. Reverend Turner.
Mayor, City Council, and City of Allen Park, good evening. Just before I pray, let me perhaps just leave with you a word. I read somewhere in a good book, and perhaps you've read that good book before, but that good book tells me that when God is the builder of the home, when God is the builder of the city, those who watch that home, those who watch that city do not wake in vain. Isn't that good news? And so, it's a comfort and it's a blessing to know that despite the shortcomings of our imperfections and all that we do to try to make our homes and our communities as well as we possibly can, that God has a way of putting the finishing touches on them, so that whatever it is that we're trying to accomplish, whatever it is that we're endeavoring to do, God is able to see to it that those goals, those objectives do come to fruition. Let's pray together. Almighty God, we come to you this evening, and what a comfort it is to know that you are the builder of our homes, you're the builder of our families, and you're the builder of this great city, Allen Park. God, we ask your blessing upon mayor and city council. We ask, Lord God, your blessing upon all the public service departments, the law enforcement, Police Chief Egan, the fire department, Chief Can, and all the other important entities that wake every day in order to give watch care over the families and the residents that make up this awesome community of Allen Park. God, we offer you thanksgiving, and we ask, Lord God, that you would continue to comfort us. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. God bless you.
Thank you. Okay, the roll call, please, Mike.
Councilman Marcos.
Here.
Councilman Blevins.
Here.
Councilman Schleck.
Present.
Councilman Valerius.
Here.
Councilman Lloyd.
Here.
Pro Tem Lally.
Here.
And Mayor McLeod.
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. May I have a motion to correct or approve tonight's agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Marcos. Any changes?
With, we will be separating Consent B to its own resolution, the door-to-door solicitation permit. And we'll do this, that directly under the consent agenda if the board approves.
Okay. Is that acceptable to the motion?
Motion.
No, again, it's just a guideline. It'd still just be license and permits, but it's separated from Clemson account.
Right, we'll address it right after we do the consent agenda. So if the change in agenda is acceptable to the original motion and second, that would be Mr. Lally and Mr. Marcos, is that acceptable?
Acceptable.
So, on favor of the revised agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
You? We have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of June 13th.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blevins. Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion has carried. Before we get on to organizational business, I want to give everyone a heads up. We received a letter from our fire chief. I think it had confetti and all kinds of stars on it, et cetera, et cetera, but he has informed us that he is planning on retiring, I believe, effective October. We will recognize him appropriately at our September meeting, but I've known Chief Can since he was deputy chief and I was first elected, and a very fine gentleman, and he will be missed, and I will reiterate that again in September. So, just so you know, you can start, you know why he's got this broad grin on his face, and why he's walking a little lighter and there's more bounce in his steps, so now we can move on to organizational.
Once again, I gotta follow that. Good evening, Mayor, Council, residents of Allen Park. A few updates on some projects here in the city. The Rosedale Boulevard reconstruction project, hard rock concrete, is finishing the side street repairs, approaches sidewalks, ADA ramps, and restoration between Champagne Road and Southfield Road. There is a delay in getting aside because of the drought that we experienced the past couple of weeks here. Obviously not the last week here with the rain, but remember, we had no rain for about three weeks before that or longer. Rosedale Boulevard will continue to be closed at Southfield a short time longer for safety to the workers, but they are making good progress and should have that open here shortly. Reek Road, water main replacement project reconstruction. Reek Road is closed between Goddard and Midway. Pipe bursting to install the new water main has been completed from Goddard to Promenade Avenue. Crews will be working this week to then installing the new gate wells, hydrants, and hydrants along this stretch of roadway. After testing is completed next week, they'll begin to hook up the new permanent water services, and once they're done with this area, they'll move to the north side of the creek. Paris Avenue, Savon cement is a contractor. They've completed the street portion on the south side of Paris Avenue. They'll be working on the approaches, sidewalks, and the dead-end section east of Lawrence Avenue for the rest of this week. After the holiday, they're going to be back to work on the north side of the street, and they'll be wrapping that up here in the next few weeks to a couple of months. For the sectioning program, Savon is doing that. They started doing some sectioning over on Muyer Avenue, that's between Allen Road and Roger Avenue, and then next week, they're going to begin working in the area off of E Course Road between Pelham and Roosevelt. Number of work going on in that area of the city. Some news here, this is Allen Park High School related, but you'll see where I get to, back to the city in a minute here. For the 2023-24 year, the Allen Park High School Media, Library and Media Center with library media specialist Melissa Lambert has been selected as the Library of Michigan Model School Library. Melissa's collaborative teaching work with teaching staff included over 200 collaborative lessons last year. Her outreach to students in the library includes marker stations, interactive book displays, Hour of Code, and March is Reading Month programming. Melissa also works closely with the local public library to provide additional resources and programming for her students. The Library of Michigan selected Melissa's library as the Model SL 21 honor for her focus engaging with students and teaching colleagues where they are in beginning and bringing resources and activities to them. So we want to congratulate media specialist Melissa Lambert, and also thank her for involving the Allen Park Public Library in that process as well, so we do appreciate that. That actually came through a statewide notification that was sent over, library and center over. Just wanted to make sure that we noted the school library and their work with the local library as well. This one here, effective July 1st, Parks and Recreation Department will be shutting down the door access into the community center from the White Street entrance. This is the entrance that is used on the side, White Street, to get to the fitness center. Visitors can still exit, they're going to shut that down starting at 4:00. We've had a number of issues, this is going to last through September 1st. They've had a number of issues dealing with some unruly teenagers causing havoc in the community center, and this is just one way to narrow that down. I would prefer to take their pictures and post them on the Facebook page, because I think there's a lot of mothers and fathers that don't think their kids are doing anything disbehaving, and I think they'd be shocked when they found their kid was there, or maybe doing some inappropriate, smoking of some marijuana or something like that, riding bikes through the hallways, and all kinds of other stuff. But that's how I am, I don't know. So, and then real quick, just want to congratulate Chris Aglione from the fire department. He's going to have five years of service here on July 9th with the Allen Park Fire Department. Two more items, if I can, for a quick seconds here. Went yesterday with DPS Director Tom Marie to the DCC for a meeting of the north branch of the E Course Creek Drain. The Drain Commissioner, Wayne County Drain Commissioner, hosted a meeting. They announced that the E Course Creek is going to get $10 million in ARPA funds from Wayne County. That's good. This is where, this is where the interesting part comes along. So, as they were talking, you have the creek that they have from side to side, the waterway itself, but apparently, and we're going to try to get ahold of this information from Wayne County, we asked them to send it to us, there is actually a, did they say a river right-of-way or a creek easement, easement that goes beyond those banks? So they're going to be looking into the issue of people that may have put sheds, privacy fences, pools, and any of those items, because they need to make sure they can gain access to clean the creek on a regular schedule. Now, there are areas that we have that they can access. I'll use an example, they were meeting yesterday with Wayne, with Wayne County's meeting with Lincoln Park and E Course. There's 188 parcels along that stretch of those two communities. Thirty-eight have public access, they're owned by the communities. So the other 150, even though they can access the water at various points, they may need to work with those people to get some of those property add-ons out of those ways so they can still get in there. I don't know where this one was at particularly, but they have a building that's actually in the creek, in the, in the, in the banks of the creek. So, I don't know where that's at, I'm going to have to go zooming down my, the map and try to figure out where it's at, but yeah, I'll figure it out, it'll just take me some time, I'm bored at home. But it's going to be a pretty interesting project that they can get this, the items coming up there, they have 10 million, they're going to work at the E Course, Lincoln Park, and then move their way west. The creek traverses through, I believe it was seven communities, but the drainage district includes nine communities, so it's a pretty, 52,000 people are in the drainage district itself. So as soon as we get that information, we'll share that. I know there's a person at this table that has particular interest, and I may, I may have a conversation with him later this afternoon, this evening, before we go. And then the last thing we have is part of the CN Rail grant that we received from American Bloom and CN Rail for the veterans' memorials at the Champagne Park and at Brand Park. We were required to become a member of American Bloom. When we did, we approved the grant agreement that was part of the requirement, I did join. Part of that process is a level-three membership, and that includes a visit by two advisors to come in and kind of spend two days touring the city, and then they're going to come back and give us an assessment of the community, and what we do well when it comes to landscape material and flowers, and what we don't do well. I spent a lot of time putting together a community profile, we sent that over to them. I now have a itinerary for their visit. I'm going to, I'll put that together for council, mayor and council. One of the dates, it's, they're going to be here the 24th of July and the 25th, it's a Monday and a Tuesday, it's, happens to be a council meeting Tuesday as well. But one of the items is to have a dinner, and I'm looking at a private location up on the hill, I'll see if anybody's available to come and join that. The two advisors coming in, gentleman from, I believe he's from Maryland, outside of Washington DC, is a village manager, and then a lady coming in from St. Louis, and she's a historical preservationist, and they both are part of the American Bloom, so we're looking forward to them being here and helping give some advice, but what we can do and improve our community. But I'll put this together, I just wanted to let you know, so July 24th, 25th, Monday, Tuesday. Monday would be for dinner, and then Tuesday, I'm going to see if they have time that they want to come to the council meeting, just for a formal introduction there. But they do ask that we give them enough time that they can work on their reports before they head out of town as well, so they may or may not be a part of that.
Thank you. We have a motion to accept and file the administrator's report.
Motion.
Motion by, I had one from each side. Motion by Mr. Lally. Second by Mr. Valerius. Mayor bouncing off the wall.
I set my voice over towards the desk.
You're getting good at that. Any comments or questions regarding the report? Mr. Blevins?
Not, not on the report, just, things I forgot to ask at the work session. Number one, any updates on the parts for the lights in front of City Hall? Number two, for the, I know we got an email from the Historical Commission wanting to do for the street fair, parking lot for the Dollar Show, if, do we need to do an agenda item for maybe next month for, get approval for them, them and the beautification to do that? And then number three, was there any updates on the, if the commission or committee came together for the library?
I don't think that the parking lot question required anything from council, I don't think we did that in the past, so.
We have done, I'll put it on the agenda for the, for the July 11th meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Soon we forget.
They split with the beautification commission as well, I think that's the same request. So that'd be on the July 11th meeting. The parts, nothing updated from Headex at this point. It seems like the light parts are becoming a bit of an issue. I was talking to town earlier, we have a light pole that got knocked down on Southfield at Kohona, and he said we struggle to get parts, that's why, I believe it's the LED components of certain aspects are there. We should be, the way that the Headex gave us before, we should be closed within a couple weeks of that arriving and getting those taken care of.
Through the chair, that last one. We're planning a meeting after the 4th, so we're going to have the holiday, and then hopefully, the plan is, is that we'll meet before our 1st July meeting, hopefully we'll, so that's the plan. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now we come to the public comments section, anyone wishing to come up and speak may do so at this time. Limited to four minutes, all we ask is that you provide your name and the street on which you live, not the full address, and the only other thing is that we ask that you keep your comments civil. Seeing as no one is coming up, we will close public comments, and we will move on to the consent agenda. Have a motion to, we have, we have a consent agenda, but we have exempted Item B, licenses and permits. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second, Ms.
Second by Mr. Valerius. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We now come to a motion to approve the exempted item. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lally.
Oh, he said the table?
The table. I'm sorry. So, the motion from Mr. Marcos was to table. May I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Schleck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
You, motion has been tabled with one no vote. We will now move on to resolutions. First resolution is to approve the lowest quote for bleacher doors in the community center from Gandel Door in the amount of $11,295. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. If anyone wished to come up and explain the doors to us. Mr. Carr.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Rob forced me to do this one tonight. So as you know, we got the bleachers redone. If you haven't had the chance to stop over, I highly encourage that you do, just contact us, we'll take you through. The bleachers are built for design for human walk-through, pedestrian walk-throughs underneath. Well, the community center was not built for storage 20 years ago, so we've decided to block off the entryways on each side to the bleachers, and we're actually going to have them cinder-blocked, and we're going to doorframe, and then where the referees come out, where the high school will come out, we will have additional gates to block, keeping kids out from under there, because we just, we need storage, and really keeping kids out from under there is going to be the biggest problem, because we clearly have issues in the building, and we don't need any hiding spots. So, Gandel Door has worked with us before, with the parks, with the community center. He's also worked with Mr. Savoni, which we will be back for probably next month for the block. Sounds like it should be a pretty easy plan, pending your approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the mayor.
Yes.
Hi, Mr. Carr. Now, when you put those doors in, you're going to block the whole section, you're going to put like a sheet of aluminum on both sides of the fence, and where the kids don't go inside?
Yep, so that'll be cinder-block, and we'll have locking metal doors.
Oh, it'd be all cinder.
Similar to Plymouth Cultural Center, if you look that up, they did the same thing, they have the same bleachers we do, and I think it looks phenomenal, so we're going to do that same method.
That's not a bad price either.
Does anyone else have any questions? You, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. We'll now move on to Resolution 2, which is a resolution to approve the appointment of Kyle Carr to the position of Deputy Parks and Recreation Director at a salary of $55,000 effective July 1, 2023. May I have a motion?
Motion.
By Mr. Valerius.
Second.
By?
Second.
Everybody?
Motion.
Any comments or questions?
Who made the support, Mayor, I'm sorry.
I did.
Everyone.
Mr. Lally. It was Mr. Valerius and Mr. Lally.
We had a little fight.
Questions?
Just a comment, I'm just going to say, way overdue. Yelled.
Further comment? I agree.
Yes, we will, we will, we will read the appointment letter, so it is official.
Good evening again. With the changes in the Parks and Recreation Department over the past year, Parks Recreation Operations Manager Kyle Carr has done a fantastic job stepping into the leadership role and ensuring that the residents of Allen Park have provided a high level of service by the department. He's worked for the city in a full-time capacity for over five years, and has a wealth of knowledge and experience in the recreation field. As we continue to move forward, I have extreme confidence with that Kyle is the right person to assist the Parks and Recreation Director, Rob Fulton, in helping to strengthen the relationship with our community partners. He has been and will continue to be a valuable, valuable piece of our administrative team.
Thank you.
And I just want to reiterate, the improvement of those relationships, that was a key component, and that has definitely come together.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Just on a personal note as well, I'm going to try and keep it together. Kyle was a student of mine, a kid, taught him while I was a teacher there, and I could be not, I couldn't be more proud of being able to approve this today. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come?
I'll second that.
I, I will, I will make a comment. I have to say that it has been very exciting and gratifying to watch the rapid growth and change in Mr. Carr since he was given free rein, and the initiative that he's taken and the effort he's putting in to his job are very inspirational. Thank you very much. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Resolution to approve the compensation recommendations for administrative appointed staff as detailed in the memo for Resolution 3. Motion, please.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. Any comments or questions?
Um, maybe chair, mostly for my, how I'm voting, I just, there's some that I just do not agree with, and I'll just keep it with that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
We have no from, you want to take a roll call?
I can take a roll call. So this is the resolution to approve the compensation recommendations for administrative appointed staff. Shall this vote pass? And we'll start with Blevins.
No.
Lally?
Who?
Lloyd?
Yes.
Marcos?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Schleck?
Yes.
And Valerius?
No.
I have one, two, three, four yes, and three no's, the yes prevail.
Thank you. Resolution 4, to approve the Human Resources Committee's recommendation for the wage adjustments for administrative appointed staff.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Marcos. Comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Want to take a roll call again?
Okay, we'll do another roll call here, and this is for the administrative, this is R4, correct?
R4.
Wage adjustments for administrative and appointed staff. Shall this resolution pass? And we're going to start at, Pro Tem Lally?
No.
Councilman Lloyd?
Yes.
Councilman Marcos?
Yes.
Mayor McLeod?
Yes.
Councilman Schleck?
Yes.
No.
And Councilman Blevins?
No.
The yeses have.
Thank you. Resolution 5, to approve the Human Resource Committee's recommendation for the wage adjustment for Mark Kibbe, City Administrator. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Marcos. Any comments or questions?
Could I, Mayor?
Certainly.
So, I just want to point out here that the reason that this is separated from the large memo is that it would be imprudent of Mr. Kibbe to recommend for a wage increase for himself, so this is something, this memo was put together by the mayor, and if you would go ahead and crunch the numbers, those percentages are in line with everybody else that is on that, that, that sheet. So, the only reason that this is separated, just so everybody is clear, is that, is so that Mr. Kibbe isn't putting together a memo for a raise for himself, just so everybody is clear on that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any comments or questions?
Just want to mention that these, every salary that's been approved is well within line, within what size city, the amount of budget that we work with, and I have to say that, for the most part, the people that are in this, in this job for the city do a heck of lot more for the city than most other places, so I'm all for it.
Through the chair.
Yes.
It, again, rather, you know, some people I believe they should have gotten more, there's some who, it's, that's why I voted a certain way. Doesn't mean that they don't deserve a raise or anything, but there's, some might feel like the percentage could have been differently, and that's, that's just.
Any other comments? I guess I will make one, just so everyone's clear. This material was presented a week in advance, not just prior to this evening's council meeting, and we did that because in the past, council members had indicated that they would like to have some input. They were provided that opportunity, and I just want to make, make that clear. Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. No.
Take a roll call.
Okay, this was for R5, the recommendation for the City Administrator's wage adjustment, and this time we will start with Councilman Lloyd?
Yes.
Councilman Marcos?
Yes.
Mayor McLeod?
Yes.
Councilman Schleck?
Yes.
Pro Tem Lally?
No.
And then it jumps to, um, I'm sorry, Councilman Blevins?
No.
And Councilman Valerius?
No.
The yeses prevail.
Thank you. Resolution Six, to amend the fiscal year 2022, 2023 year on budget, motion please.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lally. And we will hear from our finance director.
Good evening, everybody. So the state of Michigan requires that if there are any changes in your budget, that you make amendments. And so every year at the last meeting, I make sure that I am blessed. At least I do my best to try and make sure that the budget is in line. When you are over budget in the expenses for the general fund, you do get a note and a lovely little letter from the state of Michigan that asks you why you didn't know what it was going to be at June 30th. So here I am to ask for permission to make the budget amendments. For the general fund, the net effect is zero. So there is a, a request for an increase in revenues of $190,200 and essentially the increase for the expenses is the same number. Revenues are coming in slightly higher than expected. We have, we did receive the COPS grant in October and we have received a handful of reimbursements from them to date. Also, the LCSA money, so that's the personal property tax money. I have had a really difficult time budgeting what that line item should be. Every year it seems to be vastly different than the year before. We've tried our best to at least do whatever last year's number was. It has come in lower. It has come in significantly higher. Last year, the auditors actually asked me why it came in so high and I said, I actually have no idea. After the state of Michigan. Additionally, for the expenditure increases, as we've had a lot of discussion on, the, there was additional asbestos in the theater, which increased the expense for the demolition. We do have a grant for that money that will be coming in the next fiscal year to be reimbursed for that. Additionally, in the clerk's office, we have new election, voting machines, voting machines, right, Mike? And so I believe this is year five of the machines and so it is our responsibility now to do the warranty on them. So that's that. And then in the police department also, we've had several, as we've said goodbye to many police officers. I did budget for a pretty significant payout for compensated absences, just not for five people. And then also the COPS grant expenses. So we've, we have additional expenses. It's a reimbursement ba- based grant. So we have those. But on a bright note, the retiree healthcare appears to be coming in lower than budgeted. So that, that, I was satisfied with that. And then for the major street fund, we, we got the nine and a half million dollars for the roads in our bond money. And then we've had to make one principal payment. Timing, we thought was going to be a little bit different. I did budget for the interest expense, but not the, not the principal. So we did have one principal payment. And then also, we we started on the road to that adjustment as well.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the council? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution Seven is to approve the Fire Chief's request to purchase additional SCBA equipment from McQueen Emergency Equipment in the amount of $27,110. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
So as you might recall, last February 14th on Valentine's Day, you guys were kind enough to approve the grant that we received for which there was a 10% match for SCBAs, which are self-contained breathing apparatus, which allow us to breathe clean air inside of fires and smoke. And of course, as is often the case now, the federal government did not fully fund that and it's the reason that this grant had to be done. So this was a regional grant with the city of Lincoln Park. Back when Chief, Chief LaFond was the chief, when the original first half of the grant occurred, every city was allowed to sort of customize their SCBAs to how they use them regularly, train on them regularly, how our crews are used to using them, how our brackets are set up in our trucks. So there was an additional amount that you did not approve then that is in the budget. So it's already budgeted in both capital and we're using some money from uniforms, which will allow these SCBAs to work for Allen Park. And the, the, the grant specifies bottles, masks, and backpacks that they slide into. We had to adapt them with new quick connect adapters, which are stainless steel, 4,500 PSI bottles at 40 minutes, which allow us to breathe a little longer than the bottles that come standard, which can be a lifesaver. And thermal, thermal imaging cameras built into the pressure gauge, which will allow life-saving efforts, both with regard to finding persons and animals and their way around inside more quickly, but also to find their way out in the event they become disoriented. So those, that, that additional amount would be $27,110. And because you hadn't approved that initially with the grant, Amanda Wertz and Mark Kibbe and I felt it was best to come before you to get your authorization for that. Questions?
Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we will move on to other business, which entails the first and second reading of Proposed Ordinance Number Six dash 2023. May I have a motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Supported by Mr. Schlack. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, just, just real quickly. The only part of this, so this is dealing with making changes to the requirement for parking. The main change that is going on here is it used to be required that the, somebody that wanted to do this would need to go to the planning commission, have a recommendation issued, and then they would go to the, I'm sorry, reverse that. They would go to the zoning board appeals and then they would have to go, come to the planning commission. So it's just taking out one of those steps. So the only part of it that is changing is that if a developer, if a business owner needs to make this, changing to their parking, that instead of having to go to both the zoning board and the planning commission, they only have to go to one of those. That is the primary change that is being made.
Mr. Carr, would you do the first and second reading?
First reading of Proposed Ordinance O6 dash 2023, in ordinance of City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending Chapter 52, zoning, Article 9, parking, loading, and waiting area requirements by the repeal, readoption of Section 52 dash 1007, special parking permits, and Section 52 dash 1012, variants and exceptions to update the sections. Second reading of Proposed Ordinance O6 dash 2023, in ordinance of City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending Chapter 52, zoning, Article 9, parking, loading, parking, loading, and waiting area requirements by the repeal and readoption of Section 52 dash 1007, special parking permits, and Section 52 dash 1012, variants and exceptions to update the sections. And again, what, the reason for this is that to make the process more development friendly.
And since I got caught up in the reading, I forgot to ask for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we promise we won't reread it again. Seeing as we are due to go into closed session and I'm not sure how many of you will want to linger around awaiting our return, I'm going to ask that the council members give their comments at this time. Anyone who wants to stay around for the closed session may do so, but we will start with council comments on this evening. Mr. Marcos.
Thank you. I'll make it really fast. In the Mail, great magazine. I would suggest everybody take a look at this. It gives a ton of information about your taxes, what's going on in the community, all the events coming up. I would recommend this when people are on the websites, they're on the websites talking about taxes and this and that and the roads. And this gives you all the information you need. Instead of going on the websites and then we, we get, we see a lot of this, obviously, in social media where, you know, we get these pseudonyms, people commenting, oh, we're doing this, we're doing that. And nobody's really quite sure what's really going on. But in this magazine, I think you'll find all the information you need to see what is happening in the city, where your tax dollars go, who's doing what. This is more than you'll ever get on social media and it's accurate. It's more than anything. I was going to say some other things, but I think as we're going to a closed session, I will keep it short. Chief Can, you're not retired.
[laughing]
We can't, this can't keep going on. Also, any, if you do go on social media, if you want to see what's going on in the city, please use the city websites, not sites that are posted by other people that are not city employees or not, do, do not belong to the city. Please make sure you go on the city websites, okay? Other than that, I'm going to give my useless information of the day. It's National Sunglasses Day. Good night. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Councilman Lally?
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. Was over here was a police at the SUDS and mad, mad in Allen Park Police High School, a block, car block, cop on the block was there from the, I'm, I'm very nervous today because I just lost a friend not too long ago. And forgive me if I make any mistakes up here. But I do want to say what I want to say. I was present for the cop on the block in front of the Allen Park High School, mothers against drunk driving. The students and guests and everything else was very well attended and a few girls had an awards for what they do. The police officer did an excellent presentation. If you see them, tell them thank you. They deserve it. Thank you. Thank you that the fire department also are doing an excellent job, especially on the mock crash. Or a, are a dramatic presentation of the true consequences of making poor driving decisions. It's a strong message that aimed to influence driving choices. It was very dramatic. Thanks again for the Allen Park students for putting it on the demonstration. It was very real. It was really good. On, of course, you know, just 2022 Allen Park Police Department, MAD awards winner. They were honored in Lansing today, yesterday at 6:26, 23. The three of them had a over 53 drunk driving arrests. Great job to Adam Begley, Dave Pappas, and Dave Belna. I missed a great car show, I guess. It was very, very nice. It was the first time I'd missed in a long time due to a, due to a funeral memorial again, the whole weekend, last weekend. I was up to Sagatuck. I missed it very much. I miss it. Great car show. Thanks, DDA and all that helped. I hope everyone's have a safe and Fourth of July weekend. God bless America and good night.
Thank you. Councilman Lloyd?
I would like to take the time first to, my appreciation for Kyle Carr and how well-deserved this promotion is this evening. I think, you know, it was abruptly that he was put into this position and when, when he did, him and Rob stepped up and they started doing things immediately. I actually, a couple weeks before he was in that position, he just, he caught me while I was watering my, my grandma's flower bed. And, and he was talking about, talking about mulch. He was talking about advertising on the ice rink. And these are all ideas that over the course, like, you know, within the next couple months, started implementing over and over again. And I've, I've really enjoyed having a front row seat to the growth that Kyle's had as a professional, not just in doing things behind the scene, but taking a more active role in representing the Parks and Rec Department here at these council meetings, which anybody that comes up to that dais knows it's not an easy thing to do. You know, whenever I have a question or a concern, he is always on the spot, has an answer for me. So very, very appreciative of him. And to that same note, very appreciative, you know, Mr. Fulton. Rob's done a great job. I think, you know, we've had experiences in the past where not every, not everybody is actively engaged, no, no one that's here. Not everyone's actively engaged in, in bringing and making sure that they're educating the people that are beneath them. But I think Rob's done a phenomenal job, both with Kyle and with Evan, to make sure that they're a part of those high-level conversations where they're, they're talking about budgets, they're talking about scheduling, and making sure that, that those two young men have the opportunity to grow as individuals and to become the best versions of themselves. So I heard somebody say once upon a time that, you know, if you're good at what you're, you do, it's your responsibility to make more of you. And I think that that's something that, you know, Rob's done. I think that that's something that, that Kyle's done. And I know that we're going to see great things out of Evan as well. So just very appreciative of our entire Parks and Rec Department. Very surprised and saddened to hear that we're leaving, losing Chief Can. I, I know retirement is, you know, a very long way away from me. So I, I'm envious to start off with. I don't know, I'm, I'm just assuming that all police, Fire Chiefs go to Disney World when they retire. I, I, I thought, so, you know, maybe you can hook up with Chief LaFond down there and he can give you the, the grand tour. So I'm looking forward to the, you know, having you for a couple more months. And I, and I know that our, our fire department is, we've done an excellent job. And that same note, Chief LaFond did a great job when you were deputy chief, making sure that you were ready to step into that role. And I know that you've done a phenomenal job with Chief O'Reilly. So I have absolute confidence in our leadership at the fire department. And although it's sad to me to see you go, I know that we are in very, very good hands. So thank you very much. I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Valerius?
I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out tonight. And also, again, I fully support all our department heads, all our department employees. And I fully support, as being a liaison to the Parks and Rec Commission, again, Kyle, well-deserving, well, way overdue. I think anyone who has even been in the community center or been around our parks has seen the dramatic improvement in the continued development in regards to programs that were lost, like the Allen Park Association and everything else that's now back, mainly because of the work from our Parks and Rec Commission, including, you know, from the director, deputy director, and Evan Taylor. So again, in, in support of all our department heads, regardless of the way I voted today, and I'm extremely supportive of Evan Taylor. And I hope and pray that you understand your value here in Allen Park and stick around here in Allen Park. Before our next meeting on July 11th, just a shout out, my wife Holly and I will be celebrating our 29-year wedding anniversary on my 55th birthday, July 9th. So I, I'd be remiss in not mentioning that. And with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Schlack?
Thank you, Mayor. I would have started by saying I-
I would have started by saying I, on Saturday, I attended a monthly cleanup that the beautification commission's been holding. So I encourage, if you see them hosting an event to clean up another part of our great city, which I think they're going to do again this coming month, I encourage you to come out and do it. This past week, it was at Champagne Park. And it was really cool to go there and walk the park and notice the memorials that we have under certain trees in the, in Champagne Park. It's something that I knew of, but I never got up close to see them. So I encourage you to go not only see different parts of the city, but help clean up the city. I also want to thank Allen Park Citizens and Civic Fund for hosting such a wonderful event. Anyone that attended or I spoke to that was there seemed to have a great time. So that was a very, very good event. So thank you for that great organization that does so much for our city. I also want to mention, thank you, Kyle, for what you've done and what you continue to do. I mean, I've seen those bleachers up front close, and I was blown away. So I can't wait to see what more that you'll be able to do with those as bringing that Allen Park Hockey Association come alive with that. I mean, just blew me away when I saw them up close. I also want to thank the historical commission for the Father's Day weekend sale. I know sales weren't as great as they anticipated and as many people, but things happen. But thank you very, very much for hosting that. I know you will do it again next year, I'm pretty sure. And hopefully, sales will be better. And last but not least, before we meet again, will be Independence Day. So be safe, be cautious, and remember that veterans and pets might not see fireworks in the same light that we do. So be cautious, be safe about that. But definitely enjoy the day and remember the importance of it. And little point of trivia, we actually signed the declaration or declared, had a vote for it on July 2nd. July 4th is when we announced it. And when we actually signed it, it was August 2nd. So there's a whole lengthy history behind the Declaration of Independence that I encourage you to dig into. It's more fascinating than just saying July 4th. But with that, Mayor, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bellwins.
Okay, so, you know, I've, I've had many requests for dad jokes and all of it. So, so this one, again. So I started hitting facial hair, but then it started growing on me. Anyways, the, I, again, with the beautiful, beautiful commission I got to attend the cleanup also. And it was a lot of fun. You see, it's like, it's so interesting how much garbage is left. Something this summer, if you go to a beach, pick up three things. July 4th. Someone like me, I'm, I love looking at fireworks. I don't like the sound of them. If personally, all the money you spend on fireworks, donate that money to an animal shelter. Something more useful than a quick light. Yeah. Just saying. Speaking of animals, I did read that in Allen Park, we have one of the fastest bulldogs. And I honestly think Bronco, the bulldog, should have a proclamation. Bring them, because I love animals, so bring, yes. Just an idea. To Kyle, I know for the past year chatting, and like I said in my comments, way overdue. This team of Parks and Rec is, I say is one of the strongest teams we've had right now, forever. I think, like I said, with the, the raises, as people will know from the last three years that I've been up here, how I vote. I do appreciate the email coming out earlier than Friday. Unfortunately, even the last week, I've been having a personal situations going through, so I didn't get a chance to comment back on certain things. But, but again, I do appreciate our department, department heads and everyone that works for the city. But like I said, from my history of voting, that's just a personal thing. And lastly, to the DPS, I got a comment from a resident. If you can look into, on Quant Street, between Beaumont and Jonas, the road is crumbling very much. I think it's a sewer line and stuff that can just be looked at. And the resident came up and asked to mention that. Other than that, with July 4th and all summer, again, please be safe. And when you're driving, just like Mayor Protem talked about with drinking and driving, please, there are so many ways to get home. If you are not capable, there's Lyft, there's Uber. Call someone. Again, it, it's a big deal. With that, I, again, I hope everyone has a wonderful few weeks. Stay positive. God bless, and I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Mizzi.
Just like to thank you all for coming out. God bless you and good night.
Short and sweet tonight, huh? I'll try and be brief also. Very sorry that I missed the cops on the block. I don't think I've missed one since 2015. They are usually held on a Wednesday. Reserve my Wednesdays, and this one popped up on a Monday. And I had a dinner date with my granddaughter, who I hadn't seen in a while, so that took precedence. Particularly, wanted to make this one because drunk driving, if you've ever listened to me on my comments, is, is a real thing with me. And I know that Mondays was focused on Mia Howard, who was a high school student. But I, and particularly was, excuse me. For me, in 2021, the drunk driving incident came much earlier. This was not a relative. But it was a young lady who was my news herald carrier, Phoebe Elliott, who was all of 13 when a drunk driver took her life on February the 3rd. Just six months before Mia. Drunk drivers infuriate me. As we've talked here, there are so many ways. And I don't have a problem with people drinking. I have a problem with people getting behind the wheel when they're drunk. I have a problem with the law where someone is driving drunk for the fifth, sixth, seventh, or eighth time, where their license has been suspended repeatedly, where they don't have the sense, where nothing is done until someone dies. And then, in my estimation, the penalty is never strong enough. And as I sat here looking at Phoebe at 13, or Mia at 18, I thought about another family that I knew long ago, where the father was killed and the son, and the, I'm sorry, the daughter was paralyzed as they were coming home from the east side on Christmas Eve. And I would encourage everyone, we can join organizations, we can raise awareness. But I think we need to start writing to our legislators and telling them, you need to make this punishment stronger. I can forgive you once. I can maybe forgive you twice. But damn it, when you're driving on a suspended license for the eighth time, I am not forgiving you. And God help the person that kills one of mine. Then I will ask for a motion to convene into a closed session. Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd.
All right.
Roll call vote.
Okay, Mayor, I have a motion by Lally and supported by Councilman Lloyd to convene into closed session for contracts, negotiations with the General Employees Union, T-Poem, as permitted under MCL 15.268C. And then I was just informed by our city attorney that we were going to add update to pending litigation, which is allowed also, 15.268 subsection E. So shall we convene into closed session? Councilman Marcos.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Councilman Schleck?
Yes.
Councilman Valerius?
Yes.
Councilman Bellwins?
No.
Protem Lally?
Yes.
And Councilman Lloyd?
Yes.
The yeses have it. We will convene.
And anyone who wants to stay around, welcome to do so.